Call to order the regular board meeting scheduled for January 22, 2019.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening we have two students as we always do at the regular meeting of the board to showcase what's happening in the respective schools. This evening we have two students from Skyview Upper Elementary School. We have Kira Mauer and we have Will Groshop.
Thank you again to our junior school board directors. By way of announcements, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. And for attendance, we have all board members in attendance here this evening. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thanks, Ms. President. This evening we have a number of scheduled guests. This evening gives me great pleasure to introduce again, for just seems about almost every month, we're introducing the Methacton Education Foundation who happens to present us, you know, some monetary or other type of gift. So again, this evening it's my pleasure to introduce Nikki Kralovich, the executive director for the Methacton Education Foundation. Ms. Kralovich?
Hello. Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Thank you, Board. Tonight we have a check presentation from the Methacton Education Foundation. This is a $1,000 award for STEM at Eagleville Elementary for the first grade. Mrs. Kim B. here with us tonight. Researched and filed this application to purchase STEM materials for her classroom. She researched the different ways that STEM can help our students as their education evolves and how she can apply that in first grade. As many of you already know, these STEM materials can provide the tools for students to develop 21st century skills like the four Cs: critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, and communication. This grant award represents the evolution of the foundation as you've seen over the last year. We're looking to fund even more grants like this that will give us an opportunity to try out programs that can be evaluated and potentially expanded throughout the rest of first grade or even throughout the rest of the district. I'd like to invite Mrs. Beam and students from her class for the photo with the check presentation.
Thank you to the Education Foundation. And next on the agenda for scheduled speakers and guests, we have staff recognition. We have Skyview Upper Elementary School principal, Ms. Gorla, here to present two individuals with recognition. Ms. Gorla?
So this evening I'm pleased to recognize two of our wonderful staff members at Skyview. We have a really great learning community. So many of you have children that are either currently with me or have been there in the past, so I know that you know a number of the people that we've recognized over the years. And this year, our instructional assistant, Ms. Danielle Mazur, was recognized by Dr. Zerbi and myself earlier this month, who unfortunately could not be here this evening due to a family event. We are also recognizing Mrs. Amy Arriving this evening, and she is our reading specialist. I've worked with Amy for a while now. We go back all the way to our days together at Audubon when Amy was a first grade teacher. And now she travels with me and she is at Skyview as our reading specialist. So she works with our students who need extra assistance, and she works with our staff. She is a constant support for our students and staff, and especially in the area of ELA where we've had a number of new resources introduced in the past few years. She's supportive, she's diligent, she creates an environment where our teachers can collaborate, work together, and really provide a successful learning environment for our students. So I always appreciate all of her efforts and the time and the work that she puts in. She makes Skyview a better place, and she is one of my very most trusted staff members. So I'm so proud of all that she's accomplished, but I'm so thrilled that she's part of our community. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
Next on the agenda, we have the Methacton Coordinating Council presentation. We have Ms. Winters and we may have others from the group here with you to help in a presentation.
Yeah, I'm doing whole.
Oh, you're going solo?
I am.
Okay. Well, if it would be so, everyone would be so kind if we could take our seats in the front row. I know we're going to use the PowerPoint presentation, so just give us a second, we'll do that.
On the behalf of the Methacton Coordinating Council and all of Methacton home and schools, I'd like to thank Dr. Zerbi and the board for giving us the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. I'm talking mainly about just volunteers in Methacton, not necessarily home and school volunteers, but just everything that volunteers in Methacton do. The Methacton community is fortunate to have many dedicated volunteers who are willing to give their time and talents to our school community, whether it's volunteering to be a guest reader for a kindergarten class, serving as a home and school officer, or chaperoning a field trip. There's no D too small. Our families are also generous with their financial resources, which afford us the opportunity to be able to contribute to the children's experiences educationally, socially, and charitably. I broke it down into two sets of volunteers, basically, for our elementary schools in Skyview and then what volunteers do at Arcola and the high school. In our elementary schools, we have home and captains who organize the class celebrations. We chaperon field trips. We assist with some educational activities, like math centers and guest readers and kid writing, and one of my favorites, pumpkin math. We have watchdog dads at many of our elementary schools. We also have parents that help in the lunchroom, in the library, and also help the librarians with the book fair. At Arcola and the high school, at Arcola, you may not know this, parents get to come in and assist the science teachers with the dissections, which is a fun thing to do. Parents work in conjunction with the teachers to put on Arcola's One Book One School program. Back in the fall, we had the author of the One Book One School at Arcola come and do a book signing and a presentation to the students. We chaperon field trips. It takes over 400 volunteers to help with the post-prom. And then there's all the booster organizations that support our sports and music programs. Fundraising by our home and schools. Collectively, home schools raise over $100,000 a year. We use these funds for educational, social, and charitable activities. Home and school pays for things like assemblies and subsidizes field trips. Most of our schools also have a line item for families in need to help out economically disadvantaged kids get the things that they need. And many of our schools have a mini grant program that allows teachers and staff to apply for items that enhance the overall learning experience for their students. Some of the things that home and school does to help educationally is we facilitate in-school educational and cultural events, including assemblies on acceptance and kindness, variance with various Veterans Day events, help with science fairs, and like I said before, One Book One School at Arcola. Home and school offers mini grants. At the high school, there were some for multicultural and minority fiction for a new unit of study for the 11th grade English curriculum. Also, armchairs were purchased for the support room to make classroom, the classroom a more welcoming space for the students. Also at Skyview, their home and school contributes $3,500 to offset the cost of outdoor ed for the parents. We also provide agenda books at the elementary school level through Skyview. The Arcos to School program is funded by home and school and run by many Methacton parents who volunteer their time and their talents. And we also help with the presenters at various career day and STEAM days that give our students an overview of what careers they might want to pursue. Charitably, we help with the backpack program at many of our schools. We also cover things for families in needs that they can't afford, like uniforms or yearbooks or funding for a social event that's coming up. At Woodland, they have a giving tree at Thanksgiving where there's all these leaves hanging on it and you pick different items. The kids bring home different items that we can donate, food items, turkeys, all kinds of things for local families for Thanksgiving. And at Skyview, there's a big community day that home and school and other volunteers help for the students to see different charitable organizations in the area and the needs they support. The social activities that we help with is all our elementary schools have a big year-end celebration to culminate the year. There's various activities held throughout the district for kids and their families together. All our elementary schools have various activities for 4th grade students to celebrate their last year in the elementary school. At the high school, home and school supports each class of with donations to support their unique activities throughout the year. And as I said before, a committee of hundreds plans a post-prom event that lasts an entire evening and has children attend that didn't even go to prom. This keeps over 800 kids safe on prom night. In closing, while the Methacton School District's primary purpose is to provide our students with a quality education, it is also equally as important for them to have a positive experience socially. At the elementary level, children remember the holiday parties, field trips, and year-end celebrations. They are the things that make the students feel as though they are part of a community. During the middle school and high school year, children are forming friendships that will carry them through life. Many students have the opportunity to travel with their sports teams, clubs, and music programs. Those experiences would not be possible without volunteers. Our volunteers continually provide the support needed to make the students' time here in Methacton more enriching. Thank you very much.
If there aren't no questions on volunteerism, I want to say just a few things about it. I think it's rather clear from the information presented this evening that we could do this without, um, so, for all the volunteers at the school, participants, whether you're in a parent's organization for post-prom or sports teams, it is tremendous for this week. And it is, it is that because of our teachers, of our parents, of the work that we do together as Methacton students. Please, don't be, if you're reminding us so generously of the, of the star bond that we contribute to, there's a lot more, and a much skinnier path out there than Russia, and there's probably a greater opportunity than we do here. So again, thank you so much. If I could, I think next on the agenda is our performance presentation. Dr. Zerbi is here this evening, doing his review as well to share with you the 2017-18 test performance scores. So we'll be talking about things like PSSAs, SATs, keystones, ACT scores, and we want to, we want to put this presentation before you to let you know how we perform as a district now, we perform as individuals in school. So, Dr. Zerbi?
Good evening. We presented this to the education committee a couple weeks ago, and as we had, as Mrs. Rirkey and I had indicated then, this presentation is a little bit different than in previous years as it considers more than just state assessment, and there are reasons for that. So as a brief overview, we will still be sharing our testing results from spring 2018 and looking at ways to address our needs. But at the same time, the Future Ready PA Index has led to focusing on some different aspects of student performance which will also be captured in here. So briefly, I won't go through these bullet by bullet, but just to give some perspective on the information, it's important, as we were putting this together, we recognized the importance of reminding all of us about what's really been happening with testing and reporting since the beginning of the century, really, with the No Child Left Behind legislation. We know that back 18 years ago, we were looking at proficiency for all students in ELA and math, actually it was reading and math at the time. By the year 2014, we were looking at proficiency based on state academic standards. We had AYP reports, Attic Progress reports, and different designations. When 2013 came around, we had the implementation of the School Performance Profile, other No Child Left Behind. We saw this focus here expand more to growth measures, rigorous courses closing the achievement gap. We saw a move also to the PA course standards, and now we're getting away from the state academic standards to PA course standards. This also coincided with the implementation of the end-of-course keystone exams, and then we saw a substantial change to the PSSA two years later. So then in 2015, we came to the ESSA legislation where the focus is now on access and equity, college and career readiness. In Pennsylvania, we saw the development of the Future Ready PA Index, which I will explain momentarily. The state put together goals to be reached by the year 2030. Certain, and those three areas will be covered later in the presentation, achievement and growth contract measures and college and career readiness. Schools are given certain designations if they're going to be in need of improvement. And there was a PSSA testing change just most recently this past year where there were fewer days for ELA and math, and that necessitated changes to formatting and grading of tests. So we've certainly seen a lot of things happening over the years, and again, our focus is, we like to keep our focus on doing what is best in terms of practice for our students to help them grow as opposed to, you know, kind of trying to chase after just one particular test. So currently, PDE has provided the Future Ready PA Index as its public facing report card to track progress for each school. So we know that over the past several years, we saw the School Performance Profile. That's not, that's not what PDE is counting anymore. They are now looking at the Future Ready PA Index, which is more about keeping track of how you are moving along in your progress. School scores are now relevant for educator effectiveness, that is, teacher evaluation. We also know in our current state of reporting that participation in state tests has become especially impactful, or at least has the potential to be impactful, to proficiency in school scores. Anything below 95% in participation will negatively affect some of our reported information and therefore potentially our teachers' evaluations as well. We have this slide. Every year, we like to put in a slide that just reminds us about what we're talking about with regard to assessments and measures. So our assessments are the PSSA, which is based on achievement for a particular year, grades three through eight. We know that this is a one-time-a-year test in the spring. The keystones are based on achievement. They may be taken more than once. They are end-of-course exams, and so students who are not proficient have an opportunity to take them again, and any scores get banked for their 11th grade year. Measures that we are looking at now include HEVOS, which we've seen before, the Pennsylvania Value Added Assessment System, which measures students' growth over time as a cohort, looking at achievement progression from one year to the next. And Mrs. Rirkey will talk about that a little bit more later in the presentation. The Future Ready PA Index, again, this is new. As we went through last year, again, we brought some information as we received it to the board, to the education committee, et cetera, but, you know, now we can actually see it. It is a collection of school progress measures related to school and student success. So assessment is still a part of it. Our state assessment tests are still a part of it. There are also on-track measures and readiness indicators which more accurately report student learning, growth, and success in the classroom and beyond. And so again, as we go through the presentation, I'm going to begin by showing you our state assessment results, but then we are also going to share some other information with you as well. So this chart shows the percent proficient and advanced for our students on the PSSAs in grades three through eight. All of the students take ELA and math, and then in grades four and eight, they take the science of the PSSA as well. So the first column in each of the subject areas is a total of percentage proficient and advanced students across the district for that grade level. Then the next column is percent proficient or advanced across the county for that grade level. And that is followed by what you see as a rank. And the rankings are from among 21 Montgomery County districts around us where we are looking at anywhere from ranking second through 10th for the most part. We have one exception in 5th grade math. Other than that, you can see that we are within the top 10 in ELA and math. You see that grade three is ranked second in ELA and fifth in math. When you go over to science, you can see that our 8th grade science was ranked third. So we are within the top 10 for the most part across the district, and then of course, typically now higher than the state averages as well. We also show you, we've also typically shown you three years' worth of data so that we can kind of look and see, are we seeing any trends here, you know, what might be happening from one year to the next. When we put this together this year, again, recognizing the number of When we put this together this year, again, recognizing the number of changes that have occurred, it becomes very challenging to recognize any particular trends for better or worse. We went back to 2015. Again, that is the year that the PSSA changed in terms of standards and in many different ways. So you can see here, you know, that there are ups and downs as you look across, or as you look diagonally at groups of students, et cetera. But I would say that it becomes, again, difficult to say that this is comparing the same thing across the years, because there have been changes made from one year to the next. At the bottom of this slide, I just identified what some of those changes have been, both from PDE as well as from our district. Again, back in 2015, there was a test content change to PA core and had score change. In 2016, in our district, we put in the new math resource in five and fifth and sixth. The following year, in K four and seven, eight. In 2018, PDE had scheduling format changes as well as scoring changes. And in 2018, we put in our first year of the new ELA resource of K through five. We also saw redistricting that year. And so a lot of change has been occurring over time. In terms of keystones, the keystones have been not, there hasn't been as much changing with them as there has with the PSSA. So first of all, we just put in what our keystone results have been, or were for this past year. And again, you see that in the first column, our Algebra One Biology and Literature. Again, these are based on our current twelve-grade students, the county averages, and then our rank within those. Most notably here, last year, our rank among the county for Algebra One was fourteen. And this year, as you can see, we are ranked fifth. And at the bottom, I just made a note about our coldest proficient and advanced scores on the Algebra One exam, and this year it was ninety-four point two percent. Again, those scores will be banked for those students until their junior year. These are the results from 2015 and 18. Again, not so many changes in terms of keystone. And so, you know, we tend to see, you know, maybe a little more consistency as we look over time. This is just a reminder of the two ways that our testing data is used to measure our performance. Achievement is our student's scores on that assessment for that particular year for PSSA, or their best score banked for keystone. Student demographics are often correlated to these achievement results, and achievement is comparing students to standards. Every year, we're looking at a different level and group of students. Growth, on the other hand, measures a group of students over time. Demographics are less correlated as more data is gathered, and it allows us to compare the same group of students to themselves from year to year. HEVOS results come to us for the PAST school year as well as with the three-year average. And knowing that there have been so many changes with testing, and knowing that more data gets better results, we have focused on that three-year average data. This data shows us that over the past three years, we have met or exceeded the growth standard in nine out of a possible fifteen areas where the subjects in grade levels listed. When analyzing the 2018 results for ELA, we were able to identify some common areas of both strengths and weaknesses. A strength this year in grades three through eight was vocabulary acquisition and use. In some cases, it was specific to informational text, nonfiction, and others in literature. It's especially important to us that we did well in this area, because this was an area of weakness last year. Through our professional development days, although they were limited, we did do some targeted PD to address vocabulary, and our new K five resource approaches the teaching of vocabulary strategies in a way that we believe better supports application of these skills. Reading for meaning continues to be a strength on the literature keystone. A common need was in craft and structure, specifically related to analysis and key ideas and details at the shown grade levels. The weakness we want to point out, though, is not in the student's ability to define or identify these things, but in analyzing how these things impact author's choice of words, phrases, and meaning. One of the things you may have heard a bit about, and it's not listed on here, are TDA scores. And while we recognize that this is a major component of the PSSA, we also recognize that a TDA is not a standard, but rather a performance measure to assess progress on several standards. Most importantly, it's analysis, which we want to develop, not because it just improves our test scores, but really because it's a career readiness skill and it's a life skill. For math, we, while it appears there may be more strengths and weaknesses, really, it was simply that there were few common ones from grade to grade. They were more specific to each grade level as we looked through our data. One standard that stood out over the others as a strong point are listed here. One common factor with the needs was that our students are not, again, not struggling with identification of these concepts or the actual computation, but rather with application of these skills in solving real-world problems and explaining or justifying their answers. Again, doing that analysis piece. For science, we exceeded the growth standard for both 2018 and in our, over the last three years, in our three-year average. Because science isn't tested every year, part of the formula for identifying growth is based on projections and predictions of scores, meaning that the state takes scores from other tested subjects and projects how the student should perform on the test, and then compares that predicted performance to how they actually do perform. Those factors, coupled with the fact that topics are taught across multiple years before being tested, makes growth in this area even more impressive. An area for strength for fourth and eighth grades is reasoning and analysis. So knowing that that's something we want to work on in the other subject areas, we'd like to replicate those practices in science in order to strengthen our analysis skills in ELA and math. Cell growth and reproduction is a strength in biology, and an area of need for fourth and eighth grade was weather. And chemical basis for life continues to be a need for us in biology. Actions we plan to take to address these needs from our 2018 data. We continue to develop tools for analyzing our local assessments. As we continue to work with Linkit to get our classroom-based assessments loaded into the system, we'll be better able to analyze our regular student performance throughout the school year, rather than waiting for state assessment results or simply midterm and final results. We will review curriculum to identify any gaps to be addressed across all grade levels and subject areas. We'll focus our professional development more intensely on best practices around analysis, conversation, real-world problem-solving. We did begin that work last year, but again, with the limited professional development days, we weren't able to get into that as deeply as we'd like. We're also reviewing our intervention and remediation practices to best support all learners. As noted about math earlier, we believe in general, some of the progress that we have seen in specific standards is attributed to the work that our TOAs have been doing with our teachers, and professional development, and the regular curriculum and classroom practices they're working with. In June, we will be coming back to update Ed Committee on progress in these areas. And again, of course, in the fall, when we review our data that comes to us once again from this day. As a transition, before we get into some slides on the Future Ready PA Index, we just wanted to call to your attention, again, some of the other areas, as PDE through the Future Ready Index indicates, we should be looking at other areas that, beyond our state testing, that are also important for showing how our students are progressing. So back in November, I had presented information on the national assessment results from our high school students, and I captured a quick summary of some of those here. As in the past, the class of 2018 had a number of students recognized in a category of AP Scholar, depending upon how many tests on which they scored, a three or above, what the score was, or higher, et cetera. Our students also saw success with the ACTs, as the average for each subject test area exceeds the identified benchmarks for expected success in college. And we also, once again, had a number of students who were recognized as commended National Merit Scholars who are semifinalists. In general, students who score in the top three to four percent are named commended scholars, while students who score in the top one percent are deemed semifinalists and may have an opportunity to continue on for scholarships. There should be more information about that shortly. With our SATs, with the class of 2018, they now have an option to take the writing portion or not. And of those who did not take the writing portion, the average score was five ninety-five on the evidence-based reading and writing section, and six oh nine in math. And of those who took the writing portion, it was six twenty in the evidence-based reading and writing, and six thirty-four in math. And while I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, I do know that the numbers who took the writing portion, that that was a higher number than those who did not. Maybe it was over two hundred. We also see success with our students when they apply to colleges and their acceptances. Between 2016 and 2018, our graduates received acceptances to five hundred and nineteen different colleges. Of those that accepted our students, two hundred and thirty-three were common to all three years. There were seven Ivy League schools over that time that accepted students during those three years, and of those, University of Pennsylvania accepted our students all three years. And then, again, just looking at those three years, we saw that the schools our students most frequently attend are those noted here. And those are in order of the number of students that go to them at the last two, Bloomsburg and Brexel, for tied. Okay, so the Future Ready PA Index. Again, the, this was put together in part to address the uneven weighting, what is identified as the uneven weighting of content areas as presented in the School Performance Profile. So again, too much emphasis just on state tests, and then even when there were different categories, everything just sort of went back to those state tests again. It is also meant to incentivize career readiness instruction, beginning at the elementary level, beginning in kindergarten. It provides indicators of student success after graduation, and that will actually begin with 2019. And it's separated into three distinct categories: state assessment measures, on-track measures, and college and career measures. So in terms of the state assessment measures, we've seen our grade level scores across the board, so I won't repeat those here, but I do want to show you what the state 2030 achievement goal is for each of those three areas. So for ELA and literature, eighty-one point one percent. Math and Algebra One, seventy-one point eight, and science and biology, eighty-three percent. So we know that in most, in many cases, if not most, we have already achieved these particular scores. However, with the Future Ready Index, they are also looking at specific student groups. So we can't just say, okay, well, all of our students are already at eighty-six percent, so we're good, and you know, we just want to make sure that we go up, you know, a little bit from here to there. We then have to look at any of those student subgroups as well, and make sure that they are also working toward those targets, and that we're getting them there. And then, of course, we need to continue growing our students well beyond, well beyond that. The growth goal is seventy percent for all subjects, and again, that's measured through HEVOS. And then, under the state assessment measures, the state has also counted the advanced students within each subject area to give districts a look at the number of students, the percentage of students that were somewhere advanced. So on this slide, you see two charts here. Again, because we already saw the scores from the state assessments, I did not repeat those here. What we have not seen previously, however, are the growth measures for each of our schools as well as the advanced students. So you can see, again, keeping in mind that the state goal is seventy percent, when we look at the growth measure, we can see that in a couple of places, we have hit that measure of seventy percent or more. And so our challenge will really be keeping that and continuing to grow. And in some cases, we have not gotten there yet. And so we will, obviously, we are always looking to try to grow our students, and so we will continue to identify what is needed and how we might better do that. On the right-hand side, there is a chart that identifies the percentage of students at each school in each subject area that was advanced, not proficient and advanced, but just advanced. And at the bottom, you see that there is a 2018 statewide average. The state did not give a goal for this particular piece to the index. It just gave a statewide average. And so while we're all just starting to get used to the Future Ready Index, it appears that from year to year, the state is going to give an average on this, so that we can look at our district and our schools and see how our percentages are comparing to the statewide average. The second part of the PA Future Ready Index are the on-track measures. On-track measures include three areas. The first is English language proficiency. These results are based on the performance of our English learners on their access testing. Access testing is given to our English learners every year in the winter, and it measures their proficiency in reading, writing, speaking, and listening. The score for the Future Ready Index is the ratio of those tested to those who met their growth goal against the number of students who had access testing in the previous two years. The second portion of on-track measures is attendance. This is the percentage of students enrolled in our school for sixty or more days and present for ninety percent or more of that time. The third and final component of the early indicators of success, or excuse me, of the on-track measures are the early indicators of success. These apply only to third-grade reading and seventh-grade math. The scores for the PSSA in those two categories are used to measure this area unless a district chooses to use an approved but separate measure for this. Currently, we have chosen to use our PSSA results. However, we are looking into other possible assessments for use here that may serve us better. You can see here, our 2018 data related to the on-track measures. IS stands for insufficient subgroup, and indicates that there were not enough students in that area to calculate a percentage for those schools. The 2030 goal is listed. That's what we are aiming for, for English language proficiency and attendance. The early indicators of success don't have a 2030 goal, but obviously, we are looking to meet proficiency, as noted in the earlier section. You can see for attendance, we have already met the 2030 goal with the exception of the high school. And a reminder that the early indicators of success only apply to third and seventh grade, which is why they're listed just for the elementary schools and for our colo. So the last part of the Future Ready PA Index is college and career measures. And we can see that there are five different areas under college and career measures. And I would say that this is, while there are five different measures here, this is probably the area that still needs the most development in terms of where the state is headed with it, and knowing what we are going to have to do to meet all of the criteria. So the summary of college and career measures for Mefacta. At the top, in the top chart... At the top, in the top chart, you see Skyview Arcola and the high school listed there along with the 2030 goal. So the reason that Skyview Arcola and the high school are listed here is because the benchmark years are grades 5, 8, and 11. And last year, it was necessary to capture two pieces of evidence for a student at each of those grade levels. This year, it is raised to six pieces for grade 5, six for grade 8, and eight for grade 11. And those pieces of evidence can be captured within three-year grade spans, so 3 through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 11. So what we're seeing there right now is just the benchmark for what we have this year and then the 2030 goal. At the bottom, you see measures on the graduation rate. Our four-year graduation rate is 96%. The 2030 goal is 92.4%. Industry-based learning, proficient and advanced students, 50.1%. State average is 23.8%. There is no 2030 goal. Provided rigorous courses of study, 58.7% for us. Again, the rigorous courses of study might be AP, IB courses, dual enrollment courses. And again, you see a state average there. And then, post-secondary transition. This is really in process in terms of identifying, you know, where students are headed and then whether they're headed into a field of work, whether they're headed into college, two- or four-year college, or if they're headed into the military. And then, beyond this year, schools are going to start to be required to track that over
This being our first look at the Future Ready PA Index, we've identified some areas that we want to focus on based on that data. As Dr. Katona mentioned, while our achievement scores are close to or above what they need to be for 2030, we know we need to analyze our subgroup data and trends and address those needs accordingly. We also want to review the assessment options for those early indicators of success, those other assessment forms that we could use for the 3rd grade reading and the 7th grade math to ensure that we're able to portray our success accurately. And we also want to develop and implement a process for evidence collection for career readiness, knowing that we need to collect so many pieces of evidence at each grade span, we want to make sure that we're accurately reporting all that we are gathering from our students. Some highlights from our 2018 data. Eagleville Elementary was recognized as a distinguished Title I school with a High Progress designation. This means that Eagleville ranked among the highest 5% of Title I schools on aggregate progress, enclosing the achievement gap in math and ELA on the PSSAs. They're one of 86 schools in the state who earned this distinction. We also noted that our PSSA and Keystone scores are among the top 10 in the county for each grade level and subject area, with the exception of 5th grade math and 11th grade literature. Our 11th grade Algebra I scores moved from 14 last year to ranking 5 in 2018 among the other county high schools. We had a 25% increase in student average level performance and data analysis from spring of 2017 to 2018 on our Algebra Keystone. Our Grade 3 ELA ranks second in Montgomery County and Grade 8 Science ranks third. We note a growth for all students tested in Science, and our national assessments and post-secondary plans reflect success among Mefacta School District students. We're particularly proud of these accomplishments because all of these occurred in the year that followed a school closure, with students and teachers in new buildings and new assignments, with calendar changes and elimination of most of our professional development days, and with the implementation of several new resources. Each of those things on their own have the potential to negatively impact success and scores, and yet, for the most part, we maintained or even exceeded our previous year's scores.
Thank you, Dr. Katona and Ms. Ricky, for the presentation. There's quite a bit of information in here. I'm not certain, you know, how much time members of the board had a chance to review this, so there may be some questions here tonight. There may be other questions that you might have over the next few weeks. We could certainly do a number of things by taking questions here that you might have immediately. And also, if there's other questions over the next few weeks, if you want to send them to Dr. Katona, we'll be glad to, you know, get answers for you on those. But for this evening, to my right, are there any questions from members of the board on the right? Mr. Neverett?
Yeah, I'll start. Thank you for sharing this with us tonight, because there's many discussions that we have about facilities and finance. If we're not doing well here, then we've really missed the mark. There's a lot here, and I have some specific questions around just calculations and things like that that I'll send you by email. But I guess the one thing that leaped off the page at me is when we look at the PSSA results in math, the cohort trends are not very favorable year over year over year. Is, I guess, do you have any insight into that? And then, do we have comparative data from other schools in the same area?
Actually, and, oh, very loud. Actually, and that was a point that I was making, there have been a number of changes that you really can't overlook. And again, it isn't an excuse. It isn't, you know, it's, that is the way it has been. There have been a number of changes, and perhaps more so to math from one year to the next than to ELA. But we also did, all of the three teachers on assignment that I have, all did calculate across the county how other districts did in those areas over the course of the last couple of years. And we did see others who also decreased and ones that, you know, we would say, wow, you know, we'd always expect that, you know, they're doing, they're on top of the game and everything. So we saw some others that went down as well. We saw, you know, a lot of movement among the ranks and so forth. So it did seem to be a trend across the county. I can't say if it is across the state, but we did take notice of that in the county.
Any other questions? Mr. Winter?
Again, thanks, Dr. Katona, seeing this a second time. The one thing that popped in my head is similar to Ralph, I think I mention this every time I see this, is the disconnect between the math scores and the state level. And the, obviously, the testing itself affects the entire state with 48%, 30-some percent being the high, 31% being the high number at 8th grade. And it dwindles down from 3rd grade all the way down there from 54%. So there is that disconnect. But the idea that popped in my head is I know that we have contractually increased number of, we have two days, two periods in our COLA cycle that we're investigating about how to use those two days, starting next year, as part of the two days that were part of the team time. So I'm just wondering if there's some aspect of this. I know that there's been some use of flex schedules to get additional math time in there, or whatever the subject is, or whatever the need is. Has there any thought about using those periods? And you don't have to answer now, but it just seems to me there is an academic use for those two periods that we could tackle, especially around certain areas where we're, this whole state is struggling, honestly.
Yeah, I think you make an excellent point, Mr. Winter. Part of our focus, not just at Arcola, but across the district from K through 12, is to give more focused time for students who need, you know, more assistance. And that, we believe, wherever we can get it, whether it's through the two periods that you suggested at Arcola, or through a CSR program that we have at the high school, or through some other mechanism at other levels, we think that's, you know, where we can make some, you know, improvements in those scores. So, good point. So the answer is yes, we are looking at doing more of that than what we are doing today. Yes. Other questions from, Mr.?
Thank you both for the presentation. Ralph covered the one question that I had. I have a question in regards to, it looks like it's slide number 26 here, the summary of college and career measures. What does it mean and how is it calculated when you talk about industry-based learning?
The industry-based learning is, that's based on tests that our students, who are CTE students, would be proficient or advanced on tests that are significant to what they are focused on. So it isn't, it isn't, in other words, that isn't the PSS or the Keystone data, but that would be on their assessments in the industry-based learning piece.
I just mentioned that because I was a little surprised that the state average is only a 23% for that. You know, that's an area that we do stand out as significantly better than the state average. The only other thing that I would mention is, you know, we tend to see these results maybe once a year, sometimes twice a year. But, you know, in terms of our monthly board meetings, you know, don't hesitate to come in front of us with anything that you found, you know, new stuff that you're seeing with the PA Future Ready Index. Sometimes we can get bogged down in finances or property-related items, but I think that this stuff is very important for us to see on a regular basis. So, thank you very much.
I think, and I just wanted to make mention, too, I think something else that's important is, you know, not only, and as we get to know what the Future Ready Index, what we're going to continue seeing with that, that may become easier to be able to do. But I also think it's important, as we've been working with this Lincoln system throughout the year and that, and looking at how we might be able to better capture some of our own local assessment information, it will be important to watch that as well because, again, we have to always remember that these are one-time-a-year test results that we're looking at. And it does become, you know, we do want to question it when we see, you know, my goodness, what's this, you know, state average of 30% or whatever, and ours is at, you know, 50%. But I think we need to keep, you know, an eye on some local assessments, and if we have a good way of gathering that, then that will be helpful as well.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Okay.
I wanted to ask, you had mentioned that the evidence requirements per student, and I guess I'm just trying to understand this as a parent. I see, you know, I think I understand in grade 8, the job shadowing requirement might fit into some of that evidence-based requirements, but are there any other examples you have off the top of your head?
Yes, I wish I had my chart here. Actually, Mrs. Schmitz, our K-12 career counselor, has been doing phenomenal work with this, both as she and the other counselors started with the 339 plan, but also in terms of providing what is needed for the Future Ready PA Index. And so they have been working on putting together, from kindergarten through 12th grade, different activities, different work that our students do that can count as pieces of evidence. So, for example, in our elementary schools, it could be when our 4th graders go to, or have gone to the Vo-Tec, and they come back and they write a reflection piece. That counts as a piece of evidence. We have our Career Day at Skyview and the STEAM Day at Arcola. Again, just attending those things is not necessarily evidence, but writing something about it, you know, talking about something that you saw that, you know, you think you might really be drawn to or not, you know, an idea you had going in, coming out. Up in the high school, we even, on the day for the PSATs, the 9th graders had sort of a little, you know, career workshop for the day, so the results of some of that will go in. In our Naviance program that we now have in grade 6 through the high school, there are some different assessments in there that the students do, and so that counts as one piece of evidence. But then also at the high school level, as our students work on their resumes, as they do their college applications, all of those things count as evidence. So we know that we have our students doing this work. It's a matter, then, of making sure that we get it captured and upload it into the PIM system and then, you know, that it gets to the state and so forth. But there are many, many items between the counselors and our curriculum coordinators who have also contributed ideas, and we're really just, we're looking for our teachers across the board to think about things that they do, activities, projects, whatever that they might be doing, that they can, that they can say, okay, this could count as a piece of evidence. Because if it's a one-day event such as the Skyview Career Day and a student isn't here, they're not going to be able to complete that. So we want to make sure that we have enough for students to be able to do.
Any questions to the left?
The only comment I would say is, and I discuss it at Education Committee, we're going to be meeting to talk about the agenda going forward in February with Mrs. Reese, myself, Dr. Katona, and Dr., and Mrs. Ricky. And I, my focus is going to circle back and discuss each of these components as almost agenda items so that we can have a recall and see where your progress is. So that's one of my goals when we do meet, is to touch upon all the actions to address in your focus areas. And then we could take targeted items and follow through each month to kind of, like, discuss the transition in career councils, so.
Any other questions?
Yeah, in looking at the Future Ready PA Index slides, I just was wondering, you've mentioned subgroups a couple times with the state assessment measure side. I just was wondering how the, how these subgroups, and as you're talking about them on the last slide when you're saying analyze subgroup data trends and address accordingly, what are those subgroups? Can, how are they defined?
The subgroups can be, can be ethnicity. So if you have at least 20 in a certain category, if you have, you know, at least 20 in Asian, 20 in African-American, then that counts as a subgroup. It also counts in terms of economically disadvantaged students with IEPs, English learners, so all of those are subgroups.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much, Dr. Katona and Ms. Ricky, for the information. We appreciate it. And that ends the recognition of guests and scheduled speakers.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. And with that, we will move on to our reports. Mr. Earnshaw with the Finance Committee?
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on January 9th. The meeting was called order at 6:30 PM. All committee members were in attendance. As usual, our first agenda topic was the monthly financial reports. Mr. Bricker reviewed the list of bills, Treasury report, and budgetary transfers, which are on the agenda for approval at tonight's meeting. He also reviewed the expenditure and revenue reports and responded to questions from the committee. With respect to the Treasury report, I had requested a status of the capital campaign relating to the Fields Project. That'll be provided at the committee's February meeting. Mr. Bricker also provided an update on the healthcare consortium evaluation. We did receive a proposal for an alternate consortium, did not show any cost savings, unfortunately. The recommendation at this point is to stay with the current consortium, and a decision would need to be made by March, at our March Board meeting, as a vote would be needed if a change is recommended. Onto the discussion topics. The first one was the Student Activity Account closings. We reviewed a list of accounts that were proposed to be closed and the recommended disposition of the funds remaining in that account, in those accounts. And at this point, the committee concluded that additional research was needed relating to certain inactive accounts and the proposed disposition of the remaining funds, which the administration will follow up on. The mileage rate for 2019 is proposed to increase to 58 cents per mile, and that's on the agenda for approval tonight. Mr. Bricker reviewed a timeline for the planned borrowing to fund the 2019 master plan projects. We reviewed and discussed that timeline. We also discussed the amount of the proposed borrowing. And PFM are, will be invited to the committee's February meeting to provide information on the planned borrowing. The next topic was the preliminary budget for the 2019-2019. The next topic was the preliminary budget for the 2019-2020 school year. We saw the same presentation at last week's work session meeting. At this point, the budget is balanced with just under a 2.3% tax increase, which is the maximum permitted under Act 1. In the coming months, the administration will continue working on the budget with a final approval slated for June. Regarding the surplus from the 2017-2018 budget, it's currently reserved for master plan funding. We discussed a proposal, and the administration responded to questions we had, and a proposal was presented at last week's work session meeting. With respect to courtesy of the floor, we heard from John Andrews, Joe Bickelman, Jim Mollick, Mike Ryan, and Paul Winters, and the various topics that they commented on are detailed to the minutes, and the meeting adjourned at 9:25 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Property and Transportation Committee, Mr. Navarette?
So, the Property and Transportation Committee met twice since our last voting meeting, once in December and once in January. I'll just cover the January minutes here, since they are most relevant now. The committee met on January the 14th. All committee members were in attendance, including Mr. Sekala and Mr. Nowitzki from Fidavia. Covered two traffic studies, both of which were proposed for the high school, one for the high school and one for the Arcola-Skyview campus, in support of future master plan work, and the potential of a new intersection with Eagleville Road at the north end of Skyview-Arcola's campus. The committee also requested that the study evaluate the potential impacts of a 25% increase in the Arcola-Skyview student population. Under the master plan, the committee reviewed to-date spending on the 2018 master plan projects, and the final accounting is due at the February meeting. In addition to the final report on the auditorium project, which came in under budget, thank you to Fidavia and everyone else, it's great work. He noted that the certificate of occupancy had been received on December 10th, and the committee requested that the punch list be presented at all future meetings until everything is closed out. The committee also reviewed the financial summaries for the high school MEP project, which came in $163,000 under budget, and those funds are tagged to reduce the borrowing needed for any future master plan work. Mrs. Reese questioned the performance of the new HVAC system in the pool area, and Mr. Frass replied that there are ongoing performance issues that the supplier is working to address. He was hopeful that a meeting scheduled with the supplier for last week would bring about a final resolution. Under 2019 capital projects, Mr. Sekala noted that Fidavia and the district are approximately one month behind this year's timeline, which the committee had asked to accelerate by one month from last year's in order to get RFPs out to market quicker, and hopefully secure a greater number of bid responses. So, in essence, we are right back where we started, where we were last year at this time. The committee also reviewed the details of the several proposals. Those are all on the agenda for vote this evening. There was significant discussion about the scope, timeline, and cost options for the second phase of the high school MEP project, which would replace unit ventilators in classrooms with upgraded models that include humidity control. The committee requested additional information and a recommendation on how to proceed will be made at the next committee meeting in February. Under transportation, Mr. Bricker informed the committee that ratting work for the 2019-20 school year will begin at the end of this month. Changes for next year include the alignment of daycare buses with elementary school sending areas, the requirement for Act 372 requests for non-public school students, a pilot program for which was run this year, and an increased student parking fee at the high school, which would be offset for students willing to forego an assigned bus seat. During courtesy of the floor, Joe Bickelman of Audubon asked about the number and location of entrance ways with water intrusion at the high school. Mr. Fratz indicated that many of them were in the rear of the building. Mr. Bickelman also commented on the agenda for the January 15 board meeting, the need for Malona McBroom to present their enrollment study to the board, and requested paper copies of the presentations to be made on the 15th. Jim Mollick of Warsester commented on Jeffrey Imel, the former GE CEO, social media post by Mr. Navarette, the agenda for the January 15th board meeting, and claimed that the M&amp;M Elementary School projections were invalid because of the closure of Audubon and subsequent redistricting. Emily Liu, Mathacton High School AP Government student, commented on the interesting topics that the committee discussed. John Andrews of Lower Providence, excuse me, sir, commented on the timing and content of the agenda for the board's January 15th meeting, stating that he believes the M&amp;M enrollment study is flawed due to its birth rate data, commented on the presentation of capacity data and its relation to special education, and believes the board is making any decision regarding Arrowhead in the dark. The meeting was adjourned at 7:47.
Thank you, Mr. Navarette. Education Committee, Mrs. Reese?
We met on January 7th, the meeting at 6:30. Everyone was in attendance except Dr. Engstead. First discussion topic was the performance report that you saw this evening. Thank you to Dr. Katona and Ms. Ricky for that. Next up was going to be a special education audit, but due to Dr. Engstead's absence, we will be covering that in February. Also reviewed was the STEM endorsement Wilks partnership update. Seventeen teachers are participating, with all schools represented with different education areas, and we have teachers of all different years of experience, which is wonderful. There was also an update given on the report card planning update, and there's something on the agenda for that this evening. K-4 revisions are well on their way to being made, input from teachers, parents, and administration. As of now, it is the plan to bring to the board before May. We reviewed the enrollment report, courtesy of the floor, and a couple people looked at me, maybe like they had a question. What I meant was, there's mention of a planning committee in the board for compensation, so just in case. No, there's no voting on new report cards or anything of the like yet. Excuse me, courtesy of the floor, Ms. Kenworthy reiterated test-taking skills are taught repeatedly. She also feels there is too much testing. Pleased that report cards being revised, concerned about power school and time-to-input grades. Ms. Geis asked us to please be more specific about calendar on the website, for example, Keystone testing. Several elementary parents inquired about it, not realizing it was for older children only. Ms. Geis also requested that if there is inclement weather, that the marking period calendar be adjusted. Ms. Markle requested the district purchase a phonemic resource for grades K and 1, and Mr. Andrews inquired about Arrowhead decision progress and stated he felt we needed to deal with capacity issues. We adjourned at 8:15.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Policy Committee, Mrs. Hall?
Policy Committee met on January 2nd. The policy was called order at 6:32 PM with all members in attendance, as well as Mr. Summers and Dr. Zerby. For policies previously discussed, we have two that were moved to first read, number 321 Political Activities, and 818 Contracted Services. All policy, oh, under policies for first discussion, we discussed the Safe-to-Say procedures, which do not require approval, but we just had to have established procedures. Policies under five-year review were deferred until February for administrative review. Under old and new business, we discussed class rank survey, and the, I commented on, I actually asked about the class rank survey and commented on that there was new legislation that will require modification to several policies. In courtesy to the floor, Dr. Mollick of Warsester inquired if the December 3 reorganization meeting was a regular meeting or a special meeting, and why there was courtesy of the floor. He asked why information was not provided to the public in the community education program regarding Arrowhead, and remarked how there were no paper mailers to the public about Arrowhead. He also asked if there was a policy on how long it should take to answer questions submitted by the public, and the meeting adjourned at 8:15 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Hall, for the intermediate unit. Mr. Ryan?
Thank you, and good evening. The Montgomery County Intermediate Unit actually meets tomorrow night, as is generally the case. They did not meet in December either, so I don't have any report from that. I was able to make the IU Legislative Committee meeting last week. There's not a whole lot going on in terms of the Pennsylvania Legislature at this point, but the House and Senate members sworn in office on January 1st. They will return for a full session again on January 28th. Some of the topics that we discussed was 2019-2020 state budget. Governor Wolf is set to present his 1920 state budget proposal on Tuesday, February 4th, before a joint session of the General Assembly. In terms of committees, both the majority and minority committee chairs have been named. I do have a list for any board members who would like the, both the minority and majority chairs for each of the committees. And we got a brief look behind the scenes of the Safe-to-Say program that had been enacted for about three days, when we had a chance to see that. They have had hundreds of calls at this point, and there was a comment that roughly about 90% of them have been accurate calls, so, so far, they've been seeing a lot of calls across the state. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan, for that update. North Monco Technical Career Center, Ms. Drummond and Ms. Reese?
Our meeting is actually tomorrow for January because of Martin Luther King Day, but we did have a brief meeting on December 10th. We had the holiday dinner, followed by a meeting. It was a regular meeting, and just regular business. But I did want to remind members of the public that there is an open house on February 14th, so if anyone's interested and their student didn't get a chance to take the tour, or as parents you want to take a tour, the open house is a great opportunity to do that. And if for any reason, February 14th doesn't work out for you, I'm sure that arrangements can be made.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. Student Board Representatives, Sakeet and Claire?
So, at Mathacton, we currently had our midterms from January 15th to 18th. The second marking period ended on January 18th. The Science Fair Team had their first dine and donate fundraiser at the Italian Delight in Trap, PA. The MHS Multicultural Club is planning their Kids Night Out for children's in grades K to six, which will take place on Thursday, February 14th. The proceeds will be donated to community nonprofits, Cecil and Grace Bean Soup Kitchen and Accamo Family Center, to benefit low-income families. Multiple teams within the Robotics Club are currently preparing for the February 2nd and 16th competition, after the January 20th competition was canceled. Team 9156B is currently the only one to qualify for the Eastern PA State Championships to be held in March.
The freshman and sophomore classes are currently planning for the semi-formal dance, and this will be held on February 1st in the cafeteria. And also, the MHS Student-Faculty Basketball Game is going to be held in the MHS main gym, and is also being organized. The Mathacton Marching Band performed in Memphis over the winter break for the Liberty Bowl, and the group was selected to attend through an online submission, with schools submitting videos nationwide. And in sports, the Mathacton Boys Varsity Basketball Team has a record of 13 and 5, and the team has won their last seven games. And the girls' basketball team has a record of 12 and 4, and has won three of their last four games. And winter sports will end in a few weeks, and spring sports will begin in the first week of March.
Thank you for those updates. For the Education Foundation, we have Ms. Kralovich.
I just have a couple of things for you. For the foundation, in 2018, we actually set a new record with over 370 individual household donors who gave to the foundation. This includes faculty, staff, parents, grandparents, local businesses, corporations, and individuals. So, we thank all of them for their generous contribution. We are trying some new things in 2019. We're teaming up with Adam Chantry, the planetarian professor, for a star party, which will be a free event available to the community. There'll be planetarian shows every 30 minutes, telescope moving outside after that, and other space-related STEM activities, and, of course, food trucks. These will be a free event for the community. Also, this May will be kicking off the Share the Love campaign. This will offer parents the opportunity to honor the teachers who have contributed their children. Teachers will receive certificates to coincide with teacher appreciation meetings. And finally, the one I feel most comfortable about, we're in the very early planning stages for the foundation post-game Hall of Fame tournament. This will happen in the fall, and it will honor the best of the best in the community. We're working with Dr. Zerby as we move forward, and we will be looking for assistance for faculty and staff of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kralovich. And now for communications, we have our new Coordinator of School and Community Information, Ms. Amanda Kelly. Welcome.
Thank you. Very happy to meet you. So, good evening. We are excited to share some news about a multimedia project that is in development on mathacton.org. Next month, the district will be launching a new online series called Showcasing the Pride of Mathacton. The focus of this project is to enhance how we articulate many outstanding ways Mathacton Schools support student creativity and provide unique and inspiring learning opportunities. Art is the very first targeted subject area that we will be exploring. And another item of note, today marked the start of the third marking period of the school year, report cards for the second marking period will be available through the Power School Parent Portal on January 20th. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kelly. Onto our superintendent's report, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you. As listed, there are some advisements on trips and advisement on personnel. I do want to make a correction on the personnel advisement. If you would look, there were two listed there. Number two should actually be listed under 10D on the agenda, and the reason for that is that the extension of that teacher on assignment correlates to a day-to-day substitute, which would likely, if you approve it this evening, would cost us about $1,500, there about. Is that right, Mr. Regina?
That's right.
Okay. So, we want, just take note of that, and for any comments from the public, that item two, under superintendent advisement on personnel, is moved to 10D. That ends my report.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. And with that, we will move on to public comment on board action items. So, at this time, if you have any comments on any voting items for this evening, you can come forward. Mr. Andrews?
Good evening. John Andrews, Lower Providence. This is my call. This evening, you have the resolution vote. You were dead set on Arrowhead before you had all the facts. As an retired rocket scientist, and accompanying another student here, I'm very excited to get all the facts and then vote, and not be sore. The parents, let me tell you, love this school, they really love it, and are not aware of the overriding national condition we have, as it act one limited life facility compounds never happened. You have my serious rebuttal, and your presentations will be part of the superdignity. The incorrect function of capacity is for sign of base. Uncorrectly, there's no web on the option sheet chart, and I'd love to add. It's all a scheme based on emotion, not all the facts, devils in detail. We are adaptable humans. Resolution needs modification. To leave the last period, we'd add for the next school year with minimal renovation, and add this incentive. Public study committees shall be formed to advise for the following year, time of the month. In this way, Dr. Zerby gets more study time and will get better stats, with no rush, with no air conditioning. About financing, 10 local districts in Mathacton makes the highest percentage budget for debt service, 98%, 34% above the average of 10. Then the day will come, our basic education, state subsidies cut, and appreciably, as their funding plan will get spied, and the index is still controlled, and budget cuts will be needed here. There should be lengthened music or art to a portable day kindergarten. Our test is still... Ask you to keep up with head catch challengers. We call a challenger flight in January some years ago. The district of Columbia, emotions set long on one goal per day. Despite the engineers warning, even the teachers among the day.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Mr. Pickelman?
Joe Pickelman from Lower Providence. Audubon. I'd like to speak to the Arrowhead Resolution also for a second. Skyview was built to handle projected enrollment of 6,500 students. The district incurred $30 million of debt, and the payments were put on the backs of the taxpayers. The district currently has 4,790 students. It's supposed to have 6,500. A difference of 1,700 students. Audubon was closed, and 500 students were moved to other elementary schools. We still have a difference of about 1,200 students. The larger class sizes have moved through the elementary schools and are going through the high school, with smaller class sizes coming to the elementary school. Because of lower birth rates, smaller class sizes are coming through the elementary school. We're going to have declining enrollment through the elementary school. Okay? Everybody with me? I'll be slow. I think you need to get grades four, five in Skyview, six, seven, and eight in Arcola to take care of the capacity issue. Prior years, there was 1,307 kids in Arcola. There's about 790 kids there now. The ruins just don't disappear. People can make them disappear on analysis. Don't spend $14 million to renovate Arrowhead. Don't spend $14 million. Don't spend $25 million to rebuild Arrowhead. Close Arrowhead and save $1 million a year in operational costs. This $1 million a year in operational costs when you close Arrowhead was missing from all of Dr. Zerbi's charts as a crow to closing Arrowhead, saving $1 million a year. It was missing. No board member said anything about that. The number was provided by the district's consultant that we paid for. That savings number was on his charts. It was missing from Dr. Zerbi's presentations aside a challenges, a million dollars of The projections done by the district consultant was not backed up by the district consultant in a presentation here because of Mr. Andrews and Dr. Malick finding fault with birth rates. That the board could have checked out. The birth rates were wrong. The housing numbers were wrong. Mylone and McCroon didn't show up here. They gave a lame excuse that Dr. Malick put a right to know in that was going to cost them a lot of money, so they weren't going to show up to back up a separate item, their enrollment projection. Okay? If you have K through three in Eagleville, Worcester, and Woodland, I feel that those schools are in the right thirds of this district, and you can probably get full-day kindergarten in there too, those three schools. And save $14 million to renovate, save $25 million to not rebuild, and save $1 million a year in operational costs. Maybe you can straighten out that salary schedule where these poor teachers that have a year to eight years of service here got like 0.8 percent raises compared to the people at the high end of that salary table. Oh, and the positions, that's it for Arrowhead. And I hope you take the opportunity to do the right thing and correct what was done before and make the capacity.
Mr. Pickelman, please wrap up.
Right thing.
Thank you.
And I don't know if the positions were replacement or new positions that are here.
Dr. Malick?
For those Spanish teachers, I'm sure they knew were replacements. And we said something about that at the work session.
I'm sorry, do it. I'm going to talk about the same issues as everybody else. According to the resolution, you guys considered all the available information. What information would that be, by the way? What information did they own if you looked at? Can somebody come in with that again? Can I request that information? What is it? Something you want to tell me? Because I've requested it under right to know, and then I can't get it. Can't get it. I was supposed to get some of it today, two years. Mr. Navarette stated at the 8th and 18th meeting that this board, he didn't think that there's the votes of this board to tolerate even that discussion about closing Arrowhead because there's no new information. And what did he expect his employee, Dr. Zerbi, to do? Did he expect him to actually go against the will of the board? You know, put his job in jeopardy? Take a hit on his evaluation coming up in July? What did he expect? We got exactly what I thought everybody expected is what you guys wanted here. You got exactly what you wanted. He wasn't going to go against the will of the board. And this takes care of those 36 extra teachers, right, Dr. Zerbi? This will take care of those 36 extra teachers, you know, keeping the school open. The Zerbi presentation had a lot in common with the M&amp;M study. I call it the trusting presentation, because there's no backup. Absolutely no backup of any kind. Refused to answer any written questions. Refused to answer any right to know requests. Can anybody explain why? No explanation. Failed to address the Worcester capacity discrepancy. Didn't give any Plan Con capacities regarding any separations. Left out important positives, including what I handed you guys. The annual operating cost of $103,000, the cost avoidance of $189,000, $86,000. The five-year cost avoidance of $10 million, the 10-year cost avoidance of $22 million. How'd that get left out? I must have given you guys that stuff, what, four or five times? How about the educational opportunities? There must be, what, 13 of them there? Nothing, none of that stuff on the positive side. And he left out the most important piece of data that you could put in there. How about the classroom utilization that you used to accommodate everyone? Where is it? Where did it go? Nothing. Zero. Trust me on Dr. Zerbi. Trust me. Where is it all? You don't want anybody to see it. Anybody can manipulate classrooms, come up with the ridiculous, whatever that was, the show, the ridiculous show. You know? Now, we have the Ministry of.
February 21st.
Dr. Malick, you need to wrap up.
Sure. You got your own board member.
Dr. Malick, you need to wrap up.
Give me a second. Give me a second. You gave him 20 seconds. Nobody's talking here.
Excuse me, Dr. Malick, please have a seat.
No.
Dr. Malick, please have a seat.
He has concerns with the vetting of grade configurations.
Dr. Malick, if you don't have a seat, I'm going to have to ask you to leave.
Outplayed, too. Spare me.
Thank you.
Hello, Anthony Arno in Lower Providence, Calms. I spoke at the last meeting and gave some of my experience, a few years plus the year and the time structure, the work environment, the different projects, education, healthcare, all kinds of things. What I'd like to say is some of the things I touched on in previous presentations are good for, well, those are good, but I'd like to note this fact that as we start to bring more population into the schools, there's an increase of appreciation for the students. So what I would agree with some of my previous kind of projects, you know, this evening, is that there was data missing in the, um, operational data missing. But maybe not the operational data and the information that we may see. When you start to move this population, you increase population, even if you want to say that it's not going to max the capacity. We've now affected, if not one, sort of high operation, but multiple across the district. Obviously, we increase the operation cost to keep those facilities operating smoothly. And in addition, a more active appreciation of those facilities. So, taxing the system, the building itself, those become a great barrier of time to access to more population, closer to maximum. We're going to find a way. So I would agree that we should do the right thing. We should challenge ourselves to do what was not done years ago, and come up with a solution that involves, there's a thought in the design, in the implementation, in the ability to facilitate, taking into account the future, what it is our. In addition, I don't know, the focus is generally talking about the hometown numbers that generally doing the student capacity in the facility. I'm not sure if there's anything that we can, in this period, that we wish to, that we can, but there are some opportunities to help offset costs of major construction projects, some of which can be realized through 2,000, um, hometown facilities, facilities in our, our whole, you know, kind of point of, we can get a percentage of reimbursement potentially, but going through that plant on the process of offsets and the cost from the public, those communities, uh, the state dollars. The process is long, but we've already started with the part A of the planning of capacity. And I would encourage to move forward in any direction that's our flex to look at, seriously, to offset the cost. And again, as a lecturer, I follow my experience in time pushing the question back to the meeting ended, but I don't think I can. Move to next day, although I'd be willing to.
Thank you, Mr. Arno. Anyone else for public comment on board action items this evening? Okay. Moving on with our agenda. May I have a motion to approve the reorganization in board meeting minutes, the minutes, I'm sorry, for the reorganization in board meeting held on December 3rd, 2018, is attached? Ms. Reese, and a second. Ms. Drummond, any comments from the board on these minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries nine zero. For fiscal items, Mr. Bricker?
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, for your approval, I have the list of bills for November and December, the treasurer's report for November and December, the budgetary transfers, mileage reimbursement at 58 cents per mile, a set forth by the IRS, the Act One Resolution not to exceed the Act One Index of 2.3 percent, and five master plan project contracts.
Okay, before I ask for a motion, does any board member want to take any of these items under fiscal items individually? Mr. Earnshaw?
Items F, one and two, but you can keep them together.
Sure, we can do F separately. Okay. Then can I have a motion to approve fiscal items A through E as listed here on the agenda this evening? Ms. Cancrow, is there a second? Mr. Navarette, any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? These motions carry nine zero. Can I have a motion to approve the master plan projects as stated here this evening? That would be item F on the agenda.
I just wanted to separate out items one and two. F, one and two.
That's fine. I just figured we'd get a motion to approve all under F, and then?
But I want to keep one and two separate.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve items one and two under F for master plan projects? Ms. Reese, and a second. Ms. Drummond, comments? Mr. Earnshaw?
No comments.
No comments? Okay. Any comments from any other board members this evening? All right, then, can I get all those in favor of items one and two under F? Opposed? Mr. Earnshaw is opposed. The motion carries with a vote of eight to one. So now I'd like to have a motion to approve items three, four, and five under master plan projects. Ms. Reese, and a second. Ms. Cancrow, any comments on items three, four, and five? Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries nine zero. Under personnel items, Mr. Regina?
Thank you. We have a number of items for the board's consideration this evening. We have one resignation for classified, resignation for retirement for classified employees. We have one establishment professional position. We have three professional employment positions with the addition from the previous agenda under advisements. We have one item for classified employment. Three items for change of status for classified employment. One item for professional uncompensated leave. Three items for classified uncompensated leave. Five supplemental contracts. Three substitutes for classified staff, and one item for the volunteer list. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regina. Can I have a motion to approve personnel items A through K? Ms. Cancrow, is there a second? Ms. Drummond, are there any comments from the board on personnel items A through K? Mr. Earnshaw?
Just a couple clarification questions, really. So, is item D1 related to C1?
Not directly, no. There's a lot of domino effects that take place, so it was a position from a leave. I have to check on that, but I think it's three agendas ago, but I can check on that, Mr. Earnshaw.
I don't understand that, but anyway. D2, I think we said last meeting, that's a replacement?
That is correct.
Correct? Okay. And then H1, is that also a replacement?
No, that is not a replacement. H1 is a transfer from a recess aid to the .5 office assistant in pupil services.
But that is a budgeted open position currently?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just a point of clarification on the initial question you asked about the .5. When I say directly, it's not a one-for-one. When I say directly, it's not a one-for-one move. That person in the domino effect ended up being the reason for that hire, but it's three people down. Does that make sense?
Let me see, let me see.
Well, I think the clarification is, C1 is the hire related to an increase in enrollment in special education at Eagleville, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's, I want the board to know that that is a new .5 position. It wasn't anything that was in the budget for this year, so it is a new position.
Understood, so when you get through all the domino effects, the net increase is .5 for this position?
That's correct.
Okay, that's where I was getting to.
Yes.
Sorry about that, thank you.
Do we have any other questions on items A through K? Seeing none, all those in favor of items A through K? The motion carries. So I'm going to pause for a second to check with Mr. Summers on how we need to revise this, we're adding an item to the supplemental contracts?
From the-
From the advisements, yeah. Okay, so now we're onto supplemental contracts. Can I have a motion to approve the supplemental contracts as listed?
Could we take item five separately?
Can I have a motion to approve supplemental contracts one through four? Mr. Earnshaw, and a second. Ms. Can Crowe, comments from the board on items one through four? Mr. Navarret?
Yeah, number four. Can you explain what the Homer Club and early riser achievers are? Is that funded through Title I? Is that, am I understanding the attachment correctly?
Yes, those are, that is something that at Eagleville a few years ago was established through Title I to support students throughout the year who may need a little extra time.
Any other questions? Okay, then can I have a vote then to approve the supplemental contracts, numbers one through four? Motion carries. So now can I have a motion to approve the supplemental contracts for the K to four report card committee as presented here? Ms. Reese, and a second. Ms. Hall, comments from the board? Mr. Navarret?
Yeah, pursuant to Section 1103-J of the Public Official and Employee Ethics Act, I'm abstaining from voting on this item because my wife is one of the teachers eligible for the stipend. As per the Ethics Act, I filed the required written memorandum with the board secretary prior to this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Navarret.
And I will just add that the contract amount was not discussed at education, but the need for the report card committee was discussed at education, and the work that goes into it, and the need for educator input for it to be the best revisions we can possibly do. And it is my understanding, I'm not going to say that they're past due, but that it's, you know, been a long time coming, so I will just add that this was a discussion at the Education Committee.
Other comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, opposed? And abstaining.
I'm abstaining.
Okay. So if my math is correct, we've got a six to one vote, and the motion carries. And can I have a motion to approve items M and N under personnel? Ms. Reese, and a second. Mr. Winters, any comments on items M and N? Seeing none, all those in favor? That motion carries nine zero. Curriculum and programs, I see we don't have anything for voting this evening, but thank you again for the presentation tonight, Dr. Katona. Policy, Dr. Zerbi?
There's no items for approval this evening.
Yes, I see that now, thank you. Gifts and donations, and et cetera.
On the, under number 13 other, there are gifts and donations of one, we accept the donation from Underwater Construction Corporation in Essex, Connecticut, for $1,000 for the Mathacton High School Car Club. Under trips, there are three items listed for the high school band, for the chorus, and for the girls' lacrosse program, as listed. And then under 13C is the resolution that reads, "Approve the Board Resolution 1902, whereas the Board of School Directors have determined that there is a need to address the information contained in the 2016 Facility Assessment Study of all district facilities, and where this same study projected a need, a needed investment of $14,478,750 revised 2018 into the Arrowhead Elementary School in the next three to five years, and where the Board of School Directors reviewed and considered all available information, have determined that with the projected scenarios presented by the superintendent, that the Arrowhead Elementary School shall continue to operate as an elementary school in the Mathacton School District."
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. Is anyone opposed to taking these three items together? Okay, then let's do, I'm assuming you want to take item C separately? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the gifts and donations and trips as posted here this evening? Mr. Ryan, second. Mr. Navarret, any comments on the gifts and donations or trips? All those in favor? Carry nine zero. Can I have a motion to approve the Arrowhead Resolution as presented here this evening? Ms. Reese, and a second. Mr. Navarret, and comments from the board? Mr. Earnshaw?
Just one question. What's the life of this resolution, should it pass?
If you'd like, I could take that, is that the resolution itself is really a statement of intent more than a binding resolution, in the sense that certainly the board, a majority of the board could decide to go in a different direction at any point. It's not binding on the district. There would be certain obligations that the district would have if there were a decision to, for instance, close a school, and there are various legal requirements that would apply in that situation. But in terms of an obligation of the board, you know, to the extent that the intent of this, or the outcome of this, is to continue operating Arrowhead Elementary, the board could certainly change its position at any time if it so chose.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board on this resolution? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion carries eight to one. Dates for board members' calendars. We have some committee meetings, and then our regular meetings coming up next month. Any old business this evening? Mr. Navarret?
Yeah, back in the Property Committee meeting in December, we had talked about, Pico had staged some equipment at Audubon, there's supposed to be some follow-up from them. Have you, what's the latest on that? What have you heard?
So, Mr. Bricker, I know that we had done some work on that follow-up. You want to update the board on that?
Yeah, so the company is actually a subcontractor for Pico. We have a lease in place with them, and they've already made the full lease payment to the school district.
It should be known that they took the liberty of utilizing that property without prior permission. So that's where the challenge came in, and as multiple emails, phone calls occurred, actually between Mr. Ryan and myself, who first, he first took notice, I went over there myself, and it was, it was, it took a few phone calls, but Mr. Bricker did a good job getting that thing organized, and we'll get him properly reimbursed for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else with old business this evening? How about new business? Mr. Navarret?
Now that this board has committed to moving forward and keeping Arrowhead as an elementary school, we have a lot of decisions on our plate now as to how to proceed with the existing building, whether we renovate, whether we repair, whether we rebuild. There's a lot that has to happen in that decision, and I think one of the biggest things that has to happen is public input on, particularly from the staff at Arrowhead, the families at Arrowhead, the rest of the community. We've got a lot to look at as far as what are the, what are the costs associated with our goals. I'd like to take that up beginning with, beginning at the Property Committee meeting in February, and I'd like personally, and I'm input, I think this is more of a discussion point than anything else, but I think we need to lay out exactly how we're going to solicit feedback on, obviously, we know where the major repair areas are in the building, but as we need, as we cost those out, and we cost out what improvements might need to be made to the building. Do we improve traffic flows, classroom space, excuse me, the security position of the building? There's a lot to be considered in that, and I think it's vitally important that we accept public input in that process, just as we accepted public input on the process that got us to this point right now. So, up for discussion, thoughts?
The only thing that I'll add to that, Mr. Navarret, is one of, when you talked about input from the staff, you know, the over 100 emails that we received, a lot were not very specific, but one email stuck out to me in particular that a staff member wrote about the open concept of Arrowhead, and it's way too early to discuss this, but I do feel like some input from that staff is important. And, you know, a staff does come and go, and an administration does, you know, come and go, I'm not suggesting anybody's going, I'm just saying. But I, I do feel that that is important, you know, I will reiterate, even though it's probably too early to do that, that, you know, not all buildings need to be the same, and many, many, many districts have very diverse buildings. Very good school districts have diverse buildings. So it's just the one thing I will comment on, and that's way too early in the decision-making process, but I just didn't want to add that.
I think what's important is, while, you know, it's important to get feedback here from the board, I mean, really, until we reach this segment, you know, we haven't really put together what those, you know, additional processes would be, but as we heard, you know, we need public input, we need input from the staff, we got costs, how does all that associate with our goals, and we need to talk about the process for how to look at improvements, or process possibly to even look at what new construction, how that would, how that would work. But I think, let's get that input, let me put together a recommendation on how we can plan to move forward, and we can certainly, you know, get something on the agenda for, you know, Property Committee meeting, and move this, you know, conversation forward.
So you're going to come to the Property Committee with a, with a recommendation on a plan?
Well, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to hear any further feedback from the board, and then be able to come, depending on, I got to look at when the Property Committee meeting is, to tell you whether I can do that.
It says second Monday of the month.
Yeah, well.
Did you say the 12th?
I should be able to do that.
The 12th, and then, no, it's the 11th, yeah.
I'll just make one comment along those lines, that myself and a couple other members of this board, as well as Dr. Zerbi, when we were at the PSBA conference, there was a very good presentation along these lines, in terms of a district who was looking to, you know, redo one of their schools, whether it was a renovate or rebuild, the process that they went through, the community feedback that they solicited, so I would just suggest, you know, looking back on that, and Dr. Zerbi, if you don't have a copy of that, I think I still do, so, thank you.
Mike, can you, if there's any way to share that with me, I'd love to see it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And I would say add me to that list, so maybe, Dr. Zerbi, if you could possibly disseminate it as part of our weekly memo, that would be appreciated. And I think I would agree with what everyone else is saying, that I think the importance of getting as much feedback as possible, in as many forms as possible, from, from all of our community, the parents, the families, the taxpayers, you know, everyone, to hear about what is the best way to go forward, because there are, we've eliminated one option, but we still have many before us, and I don't know that there's a clear, obvious answer to the best way to go forward. Does anyone else have anything for new business this evening? Okay, with that, then we'll open it up to courtesy of the floor. Dr. Malik?
Very interesting. Campaign promise kept. So are we going to tell the public about this $14 million deal? Going to send a mailer out? You're going to be, they want to communicate. Going to send a mailer out? Tell the public? Well, I know they sent the tax bill, but send, send a mailer. You want to communicate so badly, send a mailer.
I appreciate that recommendation, Dr. Malik, thank you.
Yeah, well, act on it. All of a sudden, what, you want to communicate? Out of the, you know, oh, now that you got what you wanted, now you want to communicate? Well, communicate. Tell them about your $14 million scheme, or your $25 million scheme. Tell them, I'm all for it. Communicate by all means. Go for it. You know? Last, last week, we heard about how good this is for, you know, for Ms. Reese, for the school district, you know, quality education, quality school, you know, people want to move in because we have a quality school, that's how it works. That's not how it works. People don't come here because they hear Mathacton is such a great school. They, they look at the tax, the tax bill we got to pay. When they go, you know, have a $2,000 mortgage, or a $2,500 mortgage, then they got to figure out their tax bills, another 15 hard bucks. That's how it works. Maybe another two grand, because the way you guys keep raising taxes, that's how it works. So maybe you got to figure it out, and you start spending $25 million, because you're going to tax yourselves out of a school district, that's how it's going to work. Now, full-day kindergarten, we haven't talked about that yet, 700 grand, 800 grand, what's the need for full-day kindergarten? You know what, tell me what the need is? Because according to the Zerbi show, the need is, everybody else has it, so we're going to keep up with the Joneses, because according to our test scores, we don't really, we don't need it. So the reason we're doing it is because everybody else has it. Is that, do I have that right? The Zerbi show is, we got to keep up with the Joneses, so we're providing full-day kindergarten for like a babysitting service, for 800 grand. Is that right? Just tell me, you know, just tell me, is that what, and who pays for it all? You guys aren't doing it, because if you remember, you've got 14 million in renovations, 800,000 for full-day kindergarten, you ate up there, basically paid $61,000 in property taxes. And I still got three minutes, I'll get this in in four minutes. Your kids are costing us $396,000 bucks. That's a deficit of 334 grand. That ain't going to pay for it. You guys are costing us $334,000 bucks. How's that going to pay for our new, all this new stuff you want to buy? You know who pays for it? Senior citizens, kids with no kids, or parents with no kids, parents with kids in private parochial schools, all the people you scoff at. All the people you scoff at, and say, sit down, your four minutes are up. Yeah, I know, I've got four minutes.
Thank you, Dr. Malik.
I'll sit down.
Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Mr. Bickelman?
One thing I found strange tonight about the resolution to keep Arrowhead open, no one was at the podium supporting the resolution. No one came to this podium to support the resolution. From all the Arrowhead parents, all the Arrowhead teachers, all the Arrowhead administrators, no one came to this podium to support the resolution to keep- no one came to this podium to support the resolution to keep the school open. Why? Did they already know the vote? I don't know. The homework club and early risers club, is that still funded by Title I? Mary, Dr. Katona? Is that still funded by Title I?
Yes.
Okay. The surplus funds in the general fund, there's a resolution on the books to move that money to the capital reserve fund. Move it, okay? That's the June 30 surplus balance. Move the money, the $2.6 million, to the capital reserve fund, and if you want to assign projects, write the check out of the capital reserve fund. There's a resolution that was made to move the surplus over there. Move it over there. At the facilities committee meeting, I asked Mr. Nevarrette last week if we can have handouts, members of the public to have handouts about the budget and about the other presentations that happened at the work session last week. I came to the meeting last week, as I come to every meeting, I think I missed one in five years, and I said to Mr. Nevarrette, I says, where's my handouts? I don't have a packet, I can't follow along the budget presentation, things like that. Mr. Nevarrette said, I asked Dr. Zerbi...oh, before that, Mr. Nevarrette said he supports the public having the packets in their hands for the presentations. So Mr. Nevarrette said to me after I asked him where my packets were last week, he said, I asked Dr. Zerbi, and Dr. Zerbi said, no. Can't have them. The board member asking permission from the superintendent, we can't get a packet to follow along the presentations, do you get it? Mr. Nevarrette gets it, he supports it, but he didn't get permission. There was a bus that broke loose down at the bus depot. It crashed into the dispatcher's new SUV. About two years ago, one crashed through the entranceway, okay? They're parked in the front, on the slant, they don't have chocks in front of the tires. It went into the dispatcher's new SUV. The activity funds at the high school, the clubs for the kids, they need officers, okay? The kids have to have a president, a vice president, a treasurer, and a secretary. They need to keep minutes to be an official club. They have to have a teacher sponsor, they have to sign off on requests for disbursements, and sign off on the receipts with their teacher sponsor and the president or the treasurer of the club. You have 60 clubs that don't have transactions three to 10 years. And one with a $14,000 balance. And you might wanna contact the Coatesville area school district, because they probably have good internal controls now. So give Coatesville a call. The right-to-know request by Mr. Andrews to Mr. Regina for special ed enrollments, because he was getting to the bottom of the special ed rooms, what was it, six days late? He didn't make the parameters of the right-to-know law. Six days late. The traffic problems you have at the school are caused by the four years of boxed ideas that Dr. Zerbi laid on this district for transportation, okay? All the boxed ideas. That's why you have the parents not trusting the transportation, that's why they're backing up traffic in all the buildings. Four boxed up ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Mr. Andrews?
John Andrews, Law of Providence. I get weary of this board not taking the heart and listening to the public. I get weary. Today, I looked at the feedback document that the vice director, following what's called public input in the district. The great majority of this 476 page document was individual inputs divided in tripolis. I feel left out, I think I was one of the few people that only got one, who only got one copy. So there was something on the order of 100, 110 inputs by parents of Arrowhead. It's very curious that that's your community. You're elected from a community of about 35,000 people, standing two townships. All you saw was some brief emails from parents in one locale. How do you represent the entire district with that kind of an input? One of the documents referred to schools closing in this area, perhaps through the planning board. I'd like to know about that. I'm not aware of another school closing. I am aware that we have to meet difficult financial obligations that, to me, is clear indication that those are ignored. And you get misinformation. You got information from the superintendent in November that you have $152 million of borrowing capacity. You also have Act 1. So you don't get this great story, and bottom line, if you're not a financial expert, you're misled.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Dr. Zavertnik?
I'm the County Councilwoman of Providence Township and very proud of Arrowhead, Mom. I just wanna take this time to thank you very much for passing the resolution. On behalf of 405 families, we really appreciate peace of mind knowing that this one option has been taken off. As one of the presidents of the Home and School Association, I again thank you very much for this, and go forward with budgets, planning committees, and stuff for next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you very much. My name is Barbara Simun. I'm a local community manager at the St. Louis High School. I have a great-granddaughter that goes to Arrowhead, children in Arrowhead, and my grandchildren need help. I know it's emotional. I like to keep them in the community and not send narrow-bits to the worst of the living and every for us. I know everyone's concerned about their taxes, I'm concerned about the children's education, I'm concerned about my kids and grandchildren and great-grandchild wanting to go to school. I drive my great-granddaughter to school every day. It feels so good to have her sitting in the car and look at her principal, Dr. Roberts. And I said, oh, there's your principal, Dr. Roberts. She says, no, he's not her principal, he's Santa Claus. That's the way he makes me feel every time I see him. Yes, it's emotional, they get a good education there. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Any last comments from the board before we adjourn? I just wanted to address a couple of things before we leave. We're elected to help oversee a public education system, and public education is funded by all of the taxpayers in all of our municipalities, those who have children and those who don't, and that's the model that we have, and that's what we're overseeing here. I understand that there's a feeling that we're not listening to public input, but I assure you, nothing could be further from the truth. I get input at these meetings, I get input in my email, I get input every time I go to the grocery store, every time I'm at the soccer field, every time I'm anywhere in this community, I'm getting input. I have family members who still live in the township who do not have children, who are taxpayers. I get input from them and their friends. So that the implication that the board is not listening to public input, I think all of us would agree, nothing could be further from the truth. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Ryan, and a second. Ms. Reese? Thank you. Good night.